Tia, ten seconds.
Yep.
And I got 6:15 on the dot and welcome to the Town of Henniker's first Zoom meeting for our Select Board. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, well, thank you all for attending this evening. I've attended many of Zoom meetings, however, I have never led one. So I am bound to make mistakes, so show mercy on me. I believe that we have it all under control. Tia Hooper is going to assist on the technical side of things to keep me between the lanes, so to speak. So I appreciate all that she is doing tonight. As part of our implementation of the Zoom meetings, we are required to read a statement. And this is a prepared statement, so just kind of bear with me, but it is required. Good evening, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, we are following guidance from the state of New Hampshire. The Board is invoking the provisions of RSA 91A colon 2, Roman numeral 3, paragraph B. Federal, state, and local officials have determined that gatherings of 10 or more people pose a substantial risk to our community in its continuing effort to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with their determination, we also find that this meeting is imperative to the continued operation of town government and services, which are vital to public safety. In accordance with Governor Order Sununu Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, the Henniker Board of Selectmen is authorized to meet electronically. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing one of the following phone numbers. Phone numbers are 1-646-558-8656, and the meeting ID is 947-7768-2462. Or you can also go to henniker.org and click on the Zoom web address that is there. That'll connect you to, and you can also participate. And Tia will give a little tutorial on how we're going to be conducting the meeting as soon as I'm done reading the statement. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Henniker's website. If anybody has a technical problem or is having an issue with us, please call Town Administrator Joe at 603-998-1492, or email him at townadministrator@henniker.org. At this time, I also welcome members of the public accessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Any person found to be disrupting this meeting will be asked to cease the disruption. Should the disruptive behavior continue thereafter, that person will be removed from this meeting. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. With that said, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, where each member states their name, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under right-to-know law. So I will start, Chris Plomback, and there is nobody in the room with me.
Tia Hooper, and there's nobody else in the room with me.
Peter Flynn.
I'm sorry.
Scott, I was good, there's nobody in the room with me.
Leon.
Leon Parker, same, nobody here.
Peter.
Peter Flynn, I'm alone.
All right, so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Tia for a 30-second little introduction on how to Zoom for those that are not familiar with the format here. And then we will jump right into public comment. So without further ado, Tia.
Yep, so if you scroll down to the bottom of your screen, there should be a little bar that pops up. You can enter in a comment through the chat feature, or if you click on Participants, where it gives you a full list of participants, you can raise your hand if you wish to speak or to be recognized by the Board Chair when certain items come up for public discussion.
All right, so thank you very much. So without further ado, we'll jump right into public comment number one. If there's any members of the audience that are participating in the Zoom meeting that wish to address the Board on any issues that are not related to here on the agenda, please, well, I guess you would either text us, or there is a feature at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand as well. Is there any members for public comment? And I'm probably going to wait a little bit just to make sure in case somebody's fumbling. And don't be afraid, if you're having some technical issues, throw up a piece of paper that says help. We'll try and get through this together. So thank you, and I appreciate all your comments. I got a thumbs up on that one, so thank you. I'm not seeing anything, Peter, were you putting something up?
No, I'm just looking at my agenda.
Okay, all right, not seeing any public comments. I will move right along to consent agendas, so the consent agenda for dated April 2nd, 2020.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded by Leon, motion made by Tia, further discussion on the motion. We will do a roll call vote, roll call vote, yes, Chris Plomback.
Yes, Tia Hooper.
Scott.
Yes.
Leon.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five-nothing. Item number two on the agenda is the consent agenda for April 21st, 2020. Is there a motion?
I made a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tia, seconded by Peter. We'll do the roll call vote in the same order, Chris Plomback, yes.
Tia Hooper, yes.
Scott, I was good, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five-nothing. We will move along to item number six, our new business, or item number three, rather, and that is the Henniker's Farmers Market. And Joe, will you be point on this?
I'm actually going to unmute Monica, and she is going to be speaking for the Farmers Market.
Okay, welcome, Monica, the floor is yours.
Hi guys, hi. I reached out to Joe just asking if we would be allowed to use the town space at the community center park to open the Farmers Market. My start date, I think, is actually a week later than what is stated in the supporting documents there. I think we're shooting for the 21st of May. And so basically, the Governor has included Farmers Markets as essential. Other towns are opening their Farmers Markets. The New Hampshire Department of Ag Markets and Food has put out a list of guidelines just as recommendations for having Farmers Markets during the stay-at-home orders. And they include spacing vendors far apart, enforcing the six-foot social distancing in lines, having vendors wear masks and gloves, not having live music, not having sampling, so basically discouraging anything that involves gathering, moving people along, you know, signage about distancing and such. And so it seems that demand for locally grown food is high right now because outdoor also product is only handled by the farmer and then by the consumer, which is a lot lesser, and also our local food system is more reliable at this time when product may not be available at the grocery store. So I feel that it is very important that we bring local access to the community, and we, the other farmers feel that as well, starting May 21st. That's it.
All right, thank you. Your audio was a little choppy here and there, but I think we got the general gist of your message. Joe, did you have other comments?
No, I mean, most of the information I had was from Monica, just from a town standpoint. I just had a quick question on the Board. I don't believe last year there was any fees associated with this. I believe the years prior, though, there have been fees associated. I just wasn't sure where the town was going with that.
Okay, questions from the Board?
So Monica, how are you looking to ensure that the guidelines, the distance guidelines, are going to be implemented as the state has laid out? And how are you going to be enforcing that?
I'm going to send a document with guidelines to the vendors, and also post the guidelines on social media so that the public is aware of the guidelines. And then I am planning to be, you know, physically present and enforcing them, the goal markers on the ground six feet away, so that we are forming lines of six feet away and so forth. But, and also planning to enforce the no reusable bags, which is another one of the Governor's orders. So basically just notifying vendors beforehand and then being physically present to enforce that.
So are you going to be establishing where they're setting up? Are you going to have a map to ensure that the vendors are spaced out accordingly?
Yes.
Okay, further questions from the Board?
Yes, sir.
Peter.
Monica, you know that I'm kind of like the park cop over there over the years. And everything has worked out real well the last couple of years as far as automobiles, parking on the grass and so forth. But one thing that has been happening, and it's not only dangerous, but it's a liability for the town, and I would ask if you could police the situation, and that is some of the young kids climbing the trees. One tree in particular next to the gazebo, sometimes there's two, three, four kids climbing up, and it's very dangerous, and it could be a tremendous liability to the town, not to mention some of the damage that could be incurred on the tree. It may seem minor to a lot of people, but I see this going on all the time. I'm wondering, or I would ask, I guess, not wondering, I would ask if you could enforce the fact that they should not be climbing trees there. I don't think she's on anymore.
Okay.
I would ask somebody.
She acknowledged, Peter.
I hear you, Peter.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, I can hear you now, but I guess I would ask if the Board concurs with my thoughts on that.
I agree.
I thought living in a small town was all about tree climbing, but if you feel like it's a safety issue.
I definitely feel it is.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, since it's on Peter's property, I think he does have some concerns. Is that any property?
No.
Oh, it isn't, okay. Well, you know, frankly, it should be the parent's responsibility. And I think that's something that I'm sure Monica would agree with. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, further questions from the Board?
And one last thing, I assume, any motion to authorize this should include whether it's with a fee or without a fee. I don't think we clarified that for this year.
What were the fees?
Hi.
Go ahead, Monica, speak to it, please.
Several years ago, I think Chris probably remembers, I went before the Board and asked for the fee to be waived for the Farmers Market, and the Board voted to waive the fees for the outdoor rental of the park. So I believe that was probably three years ago now. And we had, it was voted at that time that I would pay fees if I rented the indoor space at the community center, but not the park. So I haven't paid fees for the outdoor use of the park for several years since I presented to the Board and the Board voted as such.
I want to say that was 2015, potentially.
That rings a bell. Okay. Does that satisfy your answer, Peter, about fees?
Yes, it does, and not that I'm favoring one way or the other. I just want to make that clear in our motion, that fees be waived, because we do have a policy.
Very good. Further questions from the Board? Joe, do we do this by consent, because this is an allowed use per the Governor's order? Or is this just more for informational, or do we need to make a vote?
I think if you're allowing it to do, you should make a vote, and it's going to be a roll call vote.
Very good. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we authorize Monica Rico to conduct the Farmers Markets on the community park property and waive the normal fee that goes for the rental of that property.
There's a second to that.
I'll second it, Scott.
Scott has seconded it. We'll do a roll call vote, and you order that, we've been doing it all along. Chris Plomback, yes.
Tia Hooper, yes.
Scott, I was good, yes.
Leon Parker, yes.
And Peter Flynn, yes.
Okay, motion carries five-nothing. Be nice to see the downtown return to a little normalcy. So thank you very much for all your efforts there, Monica, and thank you for all your efforts with the Henniker Food Pantry as well.
Are you still doing Thursdays, Monica?
Uh, yes.
Or Tuesdays?
Planning, no, planning to do Thursdays.
Thursdays, yeah, good.
All right, next item up is any other further issues on the Farmers Market before we move on to item four? All right, not seeing any. Item number. Is somebody trying to speak? Was I the only one hearing that?
No, I heard it.
No, you heard it.
All right. Okay, item number four is the Henniker Community School. And this is regarding the propane tank installation. Joe, you want to give us some background on this, please?
Sure, so the school reached out to me. They're having their heating system redone, and they're switching over from oil to propane. In the process, they need to bury six propane tanks. Matt Colby from the Henniker School and Zach Lawson from the School Board is here to speak about this as well. And they're looking, basically, the location they're looking at is where the current dumpsters are placing the six propane tanks buried right there, so.
Very good, so who will be speaking to this, Matt Colby and Zach Lawson?
Yep, so I'm going to unmute them right now.
Very good, thank you.
Joe, if they don't have any information, you could pull up that SVE shot so we can see the plan.
Sure.
I'll go to Tia.
Yeah, hold on.
But maybe they'll be having something to show.
I did pull it up as well, it doesn't matter to me, Tia, you can share it.
Okay.
Okay, just state your name for the record so everybody knows as well who's talking.
Sorry, it's Matt Colby, Principal at Henniker Community School. Tia is showing.
Is this the document that you're looking for?
Yes, this is great, thank you. This was in your packets. So Tia is showing here a series of properties. On the right in the middle there is the Grange Building, and then Tia is sort of moving over towards the town library. Great job, thank you. You should come to the School Board meetings, too. And you do this part. And then there's the Cogswell Memorial Middle School, which is kind of the big white spot in the middle. And then over next to that, there's some building that's got shaded lines, because this image represents the 1995 proposed addition. And then there's the elementary school with its addition at the back there. And what Scott did a great job of sort of showing, I think, and talking about the other day is that the lot lines for this whole piece of property encompass town property and school district property. And the biggest spot there that Tia showed, the Cogswell Memorial Middle School, the lot line between the library and the school sort of runs right along those parking spaces and the wall. And it goes to what looks like in an aerial image, the back line of the old gym. And so there's this whole part of the building that was built in 1962, which isn't on school property, it's on town property. And so what we're looking to do at this point is if you look, Tia, if you look to the, I guess, northwest of the new addition in 95 where the parking lot is, there's like a circular area.
Right here.
Right there, yes. Right in that middle, that parking lot is an oil tank, single-walled oil tank that was installed with the 1995 addition to run the two boilers, which are in the basement right under that new addition. And we're looking to replace those with propane. So over the last 10 years, the propane makes more sense for us. And according to the regulations, they need to be sited away from the physical building and the playground areas. So we're looking to put them, you can see them, Tia circled them, behind the location of the existing dumpster on the slope there. That's a grassy slope that goes down towards the baseball diamond. We had talked about the potential of moving the dumpster a little bit to, I guess it would be the southeast, sort of shifting it, I guess, about three feet over. At one point there in the Azalea Park plans, I think, there was a desire to be able to push the snow down onto this slope instead of having it drain over the guardrail into the wetlands area. So that's part of this as well. So we're just looking for approval because this is outside of our property zone.
Tia, can you pull up the Ekman survey just so we see those lines?
This one?
I couldn't get it to go flat, so you've got to read it kind of upside-downish.
Nope.
Yeah.
Hold on.
I couldn't do it either. That's all right, it shows what we needed to show. But you see that nice dark, dark line that's right off the edge of that, the turnaround spot there? And that is the property line between the Azalea Park and the Rec Fields. And you can see that line goes up to the building and cuts through the end of the building before the school property comes into play. It's just for our interest on it, really, it's been there for a long time, but that is the property line right there. It also shows the steep slopes, which we have a concern about. Yep.
Hold on, I'm going to stop sharing the screen for a second, I can fix it.
Just a question, is the circular line there on that last one that you had up, is that where the edge of the permitting for the park and the shoreland permit is?
The shoreland permit actually encourages, I mean, it takes 250 feet to satisfy the shoreline protection. And that there ends up probably about 50 feet from the road. Almost the entire lot is within the watershed for the DES. So even the buildings are in that watershed area.
Yeah, so we're prepared to submit the application, but we didn't need to, we're at a place where we need permission to do it before we could put an application in with DES.
Yep.
But this would be an amendment or a change to the previous Azalea Park permitting? Or what's the complaint we got from a citizen raises the issue of where the boundary lines are. Of course, there really aren't any, but we need to be clear with the shoreline.
I think if you, to Scott's point, if you follow, I guess if you start in the middle left-hand side of this image, like an arrow on your screen, Tia, you can follow the property line up. It goes next to what says used to be a storage shed, and it goes up to a point with the school, sort of in the bus loop. Yeah. Actually, Tia, from where you're at, oop, where'd your mouse go? You moved.
You know, I understand the difference, I understand the problems with the surveyed property lines. I'm more concerned with not getting in trouble with wherever, well, let me back up. I'm assuming that we have a shoreline permit for the work being done at Azalea Park, and I don't want to see this effort screw up.
Yeah, and running off of Leon's comment, you know, we also have this grant that's out there that the Azalea Park Committee is trying to finish up that report so we can be reimbursed that $25,000. And that still has not been provided to us, and that could throw a hiccup in the works of us getting our funding if it does violate one of the shoreline protection permits or part of the scope of the project.
Yeah, that issue is going to be my issue from here on out. I'm getting hold of the information that we need. We'll get in touch with DES and make sure that we can get that issue settled. This one here, the first step to get the permit would be the school's engineer would apply for that permit. They would have to ask the town's permission to do that because it is on town land. And then it would take, you know, some bit of time to get that permit reviewed and accepted. And within that time, I think, that we could resolve the, just the funding issue for the rain gardens, which is a separate issue.
And I understand it's a separate issue, but it also falls under a permit that we've pulled for work that's been done, and the town has already paid the $25,000 and needs to be reimbursed. The last thing we need to do right now is to approve something, have another permit go in that violates what we said we were going to do before we get the funding back to reimburse.
Hey Matt, what's your timeframe?
Well, contractors across the state are looking for work, so they could be here as soon as we got the permit approved.
So you've got a full design on the installation so far?
Yes, they're ready to work. The tanks, I mean, I don't know how much was shared before, so the tanks would be sited in the slope, which is the grassy area next to the dumpster, not the, where there's sort of scrub growing. The, there's a design that shows what was on the plan there for the six tanks. They're buried except for the caps. And there'll be a monitoring station and some bollards toward the street side just to prevent anybody from driving over to that section. And, yeah, the pipe would run under the ground to get to the school access. And there was some discussion the other day about if there was concern about the tanks. Tia, could you go back one image?
Okay, hold on.
Sorry, you're the SD drawing. Yeah, so you can see them, in this drawing, they're shown running down the slope six in a row. The engineers the other day discussed if it was more amenable, yeah, this is great, thank you, Tia. If it was more amenable to the Select Board, that they could go three down and be side by side. It wouldn't change the configuration of the way it would work getting into the building with the propane, but would adjust it in terms of less into the slope going down the hill if that was, you know, something that the Board, the Select Board wanted to see.
So Matt, since this is also the area that they push snow, you know, to get it out of the way for the bus terminals, where are you planning on pushing the snow or moving the snow to come next winter?
Right now, actually, because of the way the loop is curbed, the snow that comes from where we do the bus loops, if you start off at the top there where it says only with the arrow and make your way around the bus loop, it sort of comes around there where that second only is, and pops the curb because the curb is lowered there, and goes down toward the backstop. When I was talking about snow, the snow that's in the library parking lot, sort of, or the parking lot behind the library, sort of gets pushed right straight back to where those trees are. And so there was a desire at one point for the snow to be able to be pushed instead of up against that. instead of up against that guardrail and drain into the Azalea Park area, to be pushed down straight along that edge and onto the grassy area. But our dumpster is in the way and so there was an ask from the Azalea Park Committee for us to move the dumpster. So we asked the contractor to leave space for the snow to go and, you know, that's why the tanks are situated back down the slope. And to move the dumpster over to make that possible for that snow. Anybody who's been in that lot in the winter will tell you that the snow piles up and there's a lot of parking that's lost there at that time. So, um, that would be good.
Can we, um, back up for just a second? I, I wanna make sure I, I understand the point about the, the conflicting permits here. I understand the, the Azalea Park Committee, um, has, uh, filed for that, that grant, uh, that's dependent upon the work being completed. Um, I'm, I'm, I, maybe this was described or, or explained and I lost it in translation, but, but, presuming that a permit is pursued and granted for this particular project that we're looking to do with the school, wouldn't, wouldn't it be granted upon or predicated upon the, the other permit that is already in place for Azalea Park or, or am I dreaming that?
So it would be a completely different permit based on my understanding of it because of the work, but also there was a grant associated with the permit that was pulled for Azalea Park, which has been applied for and approved. The town's fronted the $25,000 for the work to continue and the state is then going to be refunding us the 25,000 once a final report is submitted, um, so we can get that money back and that is what we're currently waiting on. So that permit is part of that project and it hasn't been closed out yet.
That's what I'm wondering though, so, so just to be very clear on what the concern is, your, your point is that by, by submitting this particular permit here, that could put the reimbursement for the grant at risk?
Correct.
In what, in what way?
I don't see that happening.
I'm not sure how that-
Because, because it's outside of the scope of the work that was proposed.
For the site?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see where it's gonna be relevant whatsoever, but I am gonna make sure that we know that it's not gonna happen. It's two separate issues. Um, we have a shoreline permit, um, and it's good for, um, as long as, um, the work that we have in favor for it. You need a permit because you're changing the other permit a little bit because you're in the shoreline. Uh, it's probably gonna be a minor issue for you getting a shoreline permit. But I don't see any real connection between the, of the funding, but we do have to get the funding completed.
Yes, that, that, that's, that's what I was wondering, um, and just, just because I wanna make sure I heard that correctly, Scott. You're, you're, I, I also think I understand that this is something within your wheelhouse a little bit as well, uh, outside of your role on the select board. But if these two things are disconnected, can they happen asynchronously as well? In the sense that, uh, the permit could be applied for before the work is actually even done and would not likely jeopardize anything largely because the issues are separate and secondarily because of the timing of the issues, you're likely to receive your grant funding long before this project would actually start.
Well, we already have the grant funding, would like to get more later, but frankly, I think it'll be a DES decision. And I just can't see them, uh, derailing it for that reason.
Okay.
Cause DES will, will make the choice.
What, what's the timetable that we are looking at having that completed application that we asked for months ago completed and submitted?
I'll let you know when I have some more information within a week.
Well, we asked for this back in December.
Susan actually emailed me today telling me that, uh, she has the paperwork and she'd be getting it to me. She also has her hand up and would like to address the board at some point.
Okay, uh, hang on, I got, uh, a question from Peter Flynn first and then we'll move on to-
Yeah, I just wanna put a footnote to this, Zach, that, uh, what Tia was saying, we've been waiting two plus years for that money.
Oh no, I, that, um, and in full disclosure, when we talked about this ourselves at Facilities Committee, meaning the, the Azalea Park project was the very first thing I brought up, uh, as a potential, you know, conflict for this sort of thing. So I, 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 I'm not, I'm not just believing this, I just, I don't know the, the details, but, um, the way that it was sounding was that they're two separate issues. And so I just want to be very clear in this that we don't-
Rick, well-
-belong a project because we're not really sure whether they conflict.
Well, and here, and here's the thing, Zach. So from looking at it from my perspective, I don't wanna risk losing that $25,000 when the town has fronted the money, right? Even though the taxpayers at the last town meeting voted no to $1 supporting this, no taxpayer dollars were supposed to go to support this. We need to get that $25,000 back and not risk losing it. Like, so we need the completed application before we can move forward on this project.
So that's why I'm asking for very, very, um, like strict clarity on here is, how can this project actually be in the way? I'm not saying that it can't, I'm asking for there to be some certainty on that rather than saying, nope, 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 nope. I would like to know if it's, if it's going to.
What we need is we need the completed application so we can submit it and get reimbursed on it because we've been asking for this for months and then we can move forward on this project.
Okay, well-
Which almost has nothing to do with-
Hang on, we're gonna, we're gonna, I think, did Susan Adams have any, uh, information to chime in on this?
I'm gonna, if you're okay, I'm gonna mute her right now.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're all set, Susan.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I spoke with Tom Ballastero, who's the star mortar, uh, person that works with us. And he has three things on this progress, on this, uh, project, uh, that we should look at. He recommends, uh, and this is because we have, um, more bio retention, uh, plans in that area. And that's to alleviate the kinds of water that get into the wetlands. That we would be at least 20 feet from the top of the steep slope. That, that, these are the tanks. To access to the tanks should not be over the bio retention system. And I believe that you have that map.
Right, yeah.
And at least 20 feet from any bio retention systems. So the closer you get to the bank, uh, the more difficult it is for preserving the wetlands. And that's our concern, that's our only concern, really.
So it sounds like based on that information, the, the original proposal with six tanks in a row going down the sloopy grass away from the edge is better than-
Yes.
Okay, good. Did they say anything there about the dumpster and its proposed location on the Azalea Park plans? Cause that actually-
Done with the school, the park and the highway department, uh, and the two previous town administrators to, to help with the snow removal there.
Yeah.
And the dumpster was gonna move over towards the bank on a new pad so that the plows could plow straight through.
Right, I was wondering if they had said anything about the dumpster being that close, be closer to the slope if we move it over. So I just wanna make sure that, that part is okay.
Well, that was what we came up with.
Than the plan, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But the, but the permit, um, that we have is for very specific things. The bio retentions, the tree, um, filters and also the entrance. We had another permit to do the entrance to the parks. So every time you do something there that's within 250 yards of the, you have to get a shoreline permit. And they're separate. And so I, I sent this information from Tom Ballastero to, uh, the Joe Devine. So he has all of that. And he kind of superimposed our bio retention just with the proposal for the tanks.
In an image?
Yes.
Is that something you can share with us?
Well, I can't, but Joe can, he's got it right there. I am-
Joe, I can pull it up too.
I'm amazed that I'm on Zoom, so.
We're glad you're here, Susan.
I, I can, I can share it, hang on one second.
Thanks.
Uh, while she, while he's pulling up that image, uh, Matt, I've got a couple of questions on behalf of a constituent.
Okay, Chris.
Uh, the tanks in question that are being removed, the oil tanks, uh, the new propane tanks can't go there because they don't meet code for setback, am I correct?
Yeah, well, there's, uh, I guess there's two reasons that they couldn't go where the existing tank is. The existing tank is, um, I think it's 20,000 gallons, it's buried underneath the parking lot. Um, so the propane tanks have an exposed top cap.
Yep.
And so we would have to close off that part of the parking lot. If we, if we aren't able to put them here on this slope, um, we, we did work to identify, um, a spot nearby to the other tank. If you've been in that section, you'll remember that there's sort of, um, one lot, uh, with the upper parking and then there's the lot where everybody goes into park to vote, um, where the existing tank is. We could, if we put the tanks there based on the way we have to lay them out, uh, there'd be a loss of six parking spaces. And so, thank you, I think that's-
That's me.
Your screen, thanks. Yeah, so sort of at the, the top left of where you just drew that circle, um, we would lose, uh, yeah, so sort of in between the two yellow spots that you've got, um, we would lose those spaces. And in terms of this, the town and the school district have worked cooperatively since the late 1800s about this piece of property. We didn't think it was prudent for anyone to lose six parking spaces in this general area. And that the slope was a, was a better location.
Okay, the follow-up question is, um, where you're, where you have, uh, the, the new island kind of down by where the tanks are, could the tanks go in that island, right there, right where you're, right there?
It's a great question, if you, Tia, sorry, can you go back to the other, uh, drawing?
Yep, the big one, this one? Or the other one?
Uh, the other one, I think, this one here, yeah. So there, that, right in the middle there, it says SMH in the middle of that island.
Yep.
That's a, that's a fire hydrant. So the line, the water line goes straight to the right of that into the parking lot from the library. And, um, where it says SMH is actually points to a drain. And you can see to, if you go up to the left, SMH4 is a, is a sewer drain. And down the other direction toward the library, SMH2 is a sewer drain. There, that's a water line drain that runs through that area and out onto the field at the other end of the school property.
Got it.
So there, there's an underground water drainage through that area. Cause we did look at that, that island.
All right, thank you, and, uh, I'm gonna just assume, uh, again, this is a follow-up question from a constituent. I think I know the answer, but I also operate from the premise that the dumbest question is the one never asked. There are no such thing as in-ground propane tanks that can be buried in a driveway, correct?
Correct, the, the, yes, I think is the answer to the question.
Very good.
I have one more question.
That's all I had, thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you, Chris.
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you. The one thing that we had to do when we were doing the entrance and the work up by the building to put the rain garden in, we had to put environmental fencing down to keep stuff from flowing down into the wetlands and the river. So that's probably something they'll require when you do your permit. It's just very helpful in keeping stuff from going into the river.
Yes.
And there is a new drain, um, that goes under the parking lot, from where they put the rain garden in. And it goes directly south of, let me see, west.
I think if you're, if you're looking at Tia's plan, it goes, the, the image there, it goes from SMH5, where she sort of just was, right straight down to where it says CB5.
Okay, I've got a, a thing that's sitting right over your map, I can't see.
Sorry, yeah.
But that's all right, as long as you know where it is.
Yep. I think, uh, if I can go back to Chris's question for a second, I think that the, um, in terms of a, a different tank, the tank sizes dictate about, um, levels of, um, training and support and management. So, uh, anything beyond the size of the tanks that we're putting in, it's my understanding, we have to have, uh, special homeland security training in terms of, um, supervision and monitoring of larger tanks. So that's why, uh, that's one reason that we're going with this size. And the other reason is, um, to accommodate the slope, um, versus going with, you know, three tanks that were slightly larger, would disrupt the slope more than, than this installation would.
Matt, are, are, are the tanks going on a concrete slab with tight-ons?
They will be buried in the ground.
No slab, okay.
Uh, I, I'm not clear about whether or not they're on a concrete slab. I know that there's a concrete bunker-ish kind of structure. I gotta get out of-
So, Matt, um, the other question that I have is, with these being buried underneath the ground, close to the athletic field, what is the mechanism or the safety provisions that you're gonna put around this to ensure that no child is injured?
The-
Since it is town property?
Yes, the, um, the, I don't know if anybody has a propane tank buried at their house, but they, um, there's sort of like a plastic cover that goes over the top of the tank where all of the, um, workings are. And so those will be above the surface of the ground. And, uh, it's my understanding that there'll be a fence around that section.
Could these, uh, could these tanks not be located off to the Hennecker Athletic Field somewhere and just piped up remotely? You know, tax, I'm looking at tax map, lot 413. Uh, if you could go back to you.
Yep. Right here?
Yeah.
This is your athletic fields, the backstop is like right here.
Oh, that, okay, so the, the wording on the deed or the, the survey plot blocks the-
Yeah, so the, so the backstop would be right here and where they're proposing based on the other plan, it would be somewhere right in here that those tanks would be located, which, you know, getting to that field, kids are jumping over there, that's where parents usually are.
Well, I'm sensing a little stall here. What, uh, what guide, what guidance do we wanna give the Hennecker School District so that they can keep this project moving forward?
I'd, I'd go along with having the six tanks in a row heading down the slope, the gentle slope.
So Azalea Park?
What's that?
Is it Azalea Park?
I'd like to see Azalea.
Go ahead, Leon.
I'd like to see a reconciliation between the permits. And I understand their, their hesitation to spend the money to get a new permit, but I, I guess anything that we approve has to be subject to any conflict between those two being solved.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see the Azalea Park thing closed out with the, the reimbursement of those funds. I would also, if it was potentially possible, I'd like to see those tanks moved away from that athletic field because that was the purpose and the intent under Cogswell's, um, gift to the town that that portion be allocated for athletics and I'd like to keep it as such.
I don't think there's any connection between the two topics.
There is if one permit overlaps the other one.
If so, I don't think it will.
Am I, Scott, so correct me if I'm wrong and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is Azalea Park approving of this plan? Or is there not, is there not unanimity?
To approve it, but we did ask the person that we rely on with the information for his opinion. And, um, And as, as long as they can, one question I had is, if there is stuff above board, which I didn't realize, will they be able to push the snow down that way? I, I don't know. That, that was solving a problem. But we have not discussed it as a committee. And we just wanted to put forth our concerns and, and leave it at that, I guess.
Okay.
So Chris, my, my recommendation would be, if we can postpone this until our next meeting, have the Azalea Park Committee get on a Zoom call or a committee call to discuss the plans. Also, give Joe a chance to look at the two different permits that have been filed or the potential of the two different permits being filed. We'll also give Scott a chance to finalize and close out the Azalea Park project so we can get that $25,000 back in the queue, so we can get that reimbursed and off the table, so we don't have the potential of losing the funding. It would only be an additional two weeks.
Right, but I don't think you're gonna get a letter back from the state within two weeks saying that the...
But at least the committee will have a chance to look at it. You know, maybe we can get the, the closeout so we can get the $25,000. So if we are in conflict with those two permits, at least we have our grant funding mechanism back before the other permits filed.
Yeah. I, I just wanna make sure that the Hennecker School District has a path forward and that we don't leave them in a gray area that, where they twist, because they have contractors that are ready to work. And I believe in, I'm not a huge fan of bureaucratic delay. So with that said, Peter?
Yes, Tia, I guess I'd ask you the question. What, what is the $25,000? Why is that such a concern with this particular...
Yep. So if the two permits are contradicting each other or if there is a potential change or impact on the work that's been done by Azalea Park that negates or changes the, the project scope of the work that's already done, right? And the impact, we potentially could lose the $25,000 that Russ has already allowed the committee to utilize to move that project forward. And we haven't submitted a closeout report so we can get reimbursed that $25,000 that the people voted not to spend a dollar for.
Okay, so you're afraid that the closeout report could be affected by this permit?
Correct.
Okay. So by you asking for another, another meeting, that's two weeks, I would assume.
That should be plenty of time, especially with the amount of time that we've been waiting for this report.
I would say that we should take action in two weeks if we do delay it.
Yep.
One way or the other.
Yep.
That was my question, Chairman, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna echo my comment that we're not gonna get an answer back from the state whether or not this thing is, is, if this report is going to be filed within two weeks. Getting anything out of the state right now is taking, on, on a good day, it takes a while. With conditions of stay-at-home and Department of Environmental Services not even in their building right now, this is gonna take forever. So I wanna make sure that we give Matt and Zach from the Hennecker School District a plan going forward so that this thing just doesn't get delayed needlessly for months on end. That's, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a landscaper right now that's gonna delay this thing months if we don't act. So I'm all in favor if you wanna delay it two weeks, but I don't wanna delay this thing five weeks, or five months, which...
No, it's not, it's not five months. It's two weeks. So certain things can be completed and closed out. I think there's, if Scott's just gotten the information to close this thing out and it's his responsibility, he can submit the information to Joe so we can get everything filed, so we can get that check going.
If I may, though, what, what disposition will that change? Maybe this is your, your entire point, Chris. What disposition will that change?
So that will, that will show that we've closed out the project, that there are two separate projects, it's not impacting the ongoing work or the work that's already been done. So they can't go back and say, well, you filed this after the fact and you know that this has changed the landscape of the grant and your grant hasn't been fully completed.
If I may, in a two-week window, we're, we're not gonna be getting very far with a permit anyway. So my, I guess my point is, the, these things will, will pass each other in the mail if your disposition is in two weeks, to have sort of a positive sort of move forward on this.
Zach, I'm not willing to take action right now until we have this thing closed out.
Okay. I, my opinion is that this is a, with what Chris is saying, this is a, this is a delay that will stretch from two weeks beyond. And I would really appreciate having something more concrete so that we can make some plans. What, what hasn't been said here is, the impact that we, let me finish this. The impact that we are dealing with here has to do with whether or not we are going to start any of this project now, based on what summer programs are going to look like and everything else. So the entirety of the project is not maybe hung up on the propane tanks, but we do need to make some amount of plan, planning for how we conduct this project going forward.
And, and that's great, Zach, but you could've also come to the Board of Selectmen earlier on and had this when the budget discussions were going on. So don't put this back on the board that you need it right now. You could've been in front of us a whole lot sooner than this.
All right, all right, all right.
Chris, may I have a word?
Hang on, I, I'm gonna go with Susan first, then Matt, then Scott. So Susan.
Thank you. I know that the papers that I have in my hand are what you asked for, for all of the communication with DES. It is not the completed permit and completed form for the work done. And so that is going to take more than two weeks, I know. And I don't think it's fair to hold up this project because of that. As long as we know that we don't have a propane tank on top of a tree.
Susan? When, when did we ask...
No, she does not get to say, Chris. People are...
Tia, Tia, hang on.
We will do the best we can, for sure.
Okay, Matt's up next.
I was just gonna say, I wondered if, if the decision of the board ultimately is to not make a decision about allowing the tanks tonight, would the board consider allowing the school district to apply for the shoreland permit?
I would encourage the school to move forward on all fronts.
Okay, now Scott, to, to, well, let's take this one at a time. Let's, let's answer Matt's question. I, I am a big believer in, in doing soft planning on the timeline. And this is definitely one of those things that fits into this. And I would make a motion to approve for the Hennecker School District to go ahead and file the permit, at least, so that the clock starts ticking.
Seconded.
Seconded by Scott. Further discussion on, what's that?
I vote aye.
Okay, well, let's, we gotta do a roll call. But first, I'm interested in further discussion on the motion that's presented.
I, I think it's, I think it's the fair thing to do. I think the school has, has...
Well, it's a happy compromise.
I think the school has work to do, and it's not the town's work, it's the school's work. And they have every right to apply for the permit and to work with their engineer to come up with the best solution possible and then let the town know about it. As far as Azalea Park goes, I'd like to point out that, that, that project we did do for $25,000 is less than a quarter of the project that we want done, which is the rain gardens throughout the place. It was a good project, and it's costly, and it's a step-by-step procedure. The permit we had was the Shoreland Protection Permit, which covers the entire project and doesn't really come into play with the work that we have done because the permit is in place. With that said, I, I think that the, the things that the school will do will be to apply for the permit, let us know if there is any backlash to it. I don't think there will be. And to continue with their engineer and to come up with the final plan. That's all I have to say.
Leon?
Clearly, a competent engineer doing the plan required for the school district is gonna deal with any conflict between the two. So I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, further discussion on the motion.
I think there needs to be adequate work, and that closeout report needs to be done sooner rather than later. We've been waiting a long time for it, and it needs to happen now so we can then move forward with other things like making decisions moving forward about the propane tanks themselves.
Well, I hear what you're saying, Tia, but I personally don't think any of the taxpayer funds are gonna be jeopardized. I think that'll all be vetted in the, in the permit process itself. I am still on board that I don't want any tax dollars going into this Azalea Park thing. So on that front, I am, you know, I'm still solid in my beliefs. But in the same time, I don't wanna just tell the Hennecker School District that they can't do anything, they gotta sit on their hands for a month while we get some more information together. So I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And if there's no further discussion on the motion, we'll do a roll call vote. Not seeing any other discussion, I'll do a roll call. Chris is yes. Tia?
I'll say yes for the permit.
Okay, in the same order we've been doing. Scott?
I'm not sure what Tia's yes meant, but I'll say yes to, to give the, the school board, the school comp launch to move forward with their project.
Very good. Leon?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five, nothing. Susan, please redouble your efforts to get all the paperwork filed and so that we can have this. And I would say...
As a point of order, Chris, sorry. What is, what was the motion that was agreed to, just so we don't get too far...
The motion was agreed to that the Hennecker School District should proceed with getting this thing permitted. But in full disclosure, you should probably also mention to DES when you file the paperwork that we have a grant that is pending. And we wanna make sure that this in no way, shape, or form jeopardizes that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And if you can include Joe Devine on the communication, just so we have it for the file if anything pops up.
Yes, thank you, Tia.
Zach, give me a call. Zach, give me a call.
Okay, we'll do that, thank you.
All right. So that was just a separate motion inside of this item number. So I think, Leon, you had the floor. Are you good?
Yep.
Okay. Is any other issues on this? Okay.
I guess, Chris, I would just ask the...
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just ask the school to give us a, a, any revised plan that comes up from their engineer.
Yes, we'll do that. And you keep, guys keep talking about how you're meeting again in two weeks.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll, I'll at least plan on being back here for that.
Yeah, even if, even if it's just a five-minute update, just to let us know where the process is, because bureaucracy just drives me nuts. It's, so if, whatever you can do to keep projects moving along and people working, especially around now, the... All right. So if I'm not hearing any other comments regarding this issue, we'll move along on the agenda item. We good? Okay. Next up is item number five, Highway Superintendent Disposal of Pickup Truck. Joe, will you be speaking on behalf of Leo?
I will be speaking on behalf of Leo. Back in, back in December 2019, you authorized the Highway Department to purchase a new Ford F-350 pickup truck. That was to replace one of our aging models. The superintendent is looking to dispose of that at auction at White's Farm. So we're just looking for authorization to go forward with that.
Move to approve.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Leon, seconded by Tia. Just for the sake of the audience, could we get the stats on what this truck is and how many miles and years and all that?
I, the superintendent did not give that, me that information.
Hold on, I can pull it up.
Thank you.
Okay, while she pulls that up, Peter, you had a question?
Yes, I just wanted to ask the town administrator if the funds for that sale are going into a revenue account or going to offset highway.
My understa, I wasn't 100% sure on how we were gonna proceed with that. I would assume it would go into a revenue account, but...
That's the way it should go, I think. Okay, thank you. That's, that answered my question.
Okay, Tia?
Yep, I'm pulling up, hold on one second, please. So I believe that this is going to be 601, which is a 2008 Ford F-3 pickup, F-350 pickup. The purchase price was $60,000, which was with used equipment on the front. The miles or hours on it is 93,503, and this was taken back when the CIP did its actual inventory, which was back in November.
So this also dovetails in with the capital replacement or capital...
Correct.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
All right, we, motion was by Leon, if I recall, and it was seconded by Tia.
Correct.
Further discussion on the motion. Not seeing any. I'll do a roll call vote in the same order we do. Chris is yes.
Tia, yes.
Scott, yes.
Leon, yes.
Peter, yes.
Okay, motion carries five, nothing. Okay. Item number six, amend ordinance number 25. And Mr. Devine, floor is yours.
Can we, can we actually discuss this after we talk about the policies? Because it makes more sense to talk about the zoning policy since this goes hand-in-hand with it. If you double forward with the zoning policy.
You wanna go to seven first, then six?
I would, if that's okay, yes.
Very good. Temporary public meetings.
So basically, that's covering what we're doing right now is, we don't have a policy that kind of covers any temporary meetings, and a lot of towns are going forward with a policy that kind of dictates it. So using the guidance of NHMA, I did draft a temporary policy for public meetings, which is what is in your packets today. Again, it basically covers the location of the meeting, things that we're doing right now.
I'll make a motion to move it to a second reading.
Seconded by Lee, Peter. Okay. Since this is a change, and since this is sort of temporary, we don't need to do public input on this, correct?
No, it's a first reading, Chris, so technically, it would not have public input. We'll have public input on the second reading.
Second reading, okay. Very good. Call the roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
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 Very good. Okay, next one up is zoning permit.
So this is going to amend the selection policy that's already in place to cover the building permit policy. So section of the selection policies, 1.2, is currently called Building Permit Policy. We are no longer doing building permits. So this policy has readapted itself to cover zoning permits, which is how we're moving forward in the town. So this is a policy that would be under the selection policies to cover that. Some of the, some of the pieces of the policy are the same as far as utilities, demolition, asbestos, the current use piece. But the big change is obviously gonna be the actual zoning permits. So the town has a zoning permit that we're moving forward with. Basically, that's ensuring setbacks are being met and any of the uses are being allowed in the zones. So this is gonna cover us to be able to handle those permits that we're issuing right now.
Joe, have you run this by Mark Fugere or submitted it to the planning board for review just in case it conflicts?
I, I did give it to Mark. The only, it doesn't conflict that, that we found. We're actually referencing in the planning, in our zoning, we have a zoning permit that's covered. And we're referencing that because in order to use that zoning permit in our zoning policy, you have to have a policy in place. And so the selectmen have the right to write those regulations for the policy in place, which is what this is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Peter.
To the town administrator, have you gotten any information or advice or recommendation or run this by the fire marshal?
I have not run this by the fire marshal because it's a straight, it's only a zoning permit that we're gonna be doing. So the life safety side of things that the fire department would do, they're gonna continue on doing life safety inspections as they always have. Where we're not doing building inspecting anymore. always have. Um, where we're not doing building inspecting anymore, uh, this is that substitute.
Okay. Thank you.
And one of the.
Great question.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I just, so I was, um, just looking at the, um, comparison of communities and all the funding, uh, that goes with it. Will, will we going to include these changes in the staff report as well?
Well, that's, that's the amendment to ordinance 25 that I wanted to discuss because it relates to this. If we don't have a zoning permit, there's no point in talking about the fees. So I wanted to move forward first with the zoning permit.
All right. So this would, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so this would also be a first reading and we go to a second. And I would make, I would make the motion that we go to a second reading.
Second.
Okay. Uh, before we do that, so on the effect of a 2,000 square foot home, what is the old fee versus the new fee?
So, Chris, those are two separate articles. So if we can do the first one, which is the zoning ordinance permit, which is the one that we're discussing right now, and then we're going to circle back and do the fees.
Oh, okay, we're breaking it in two?
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah.
I just have one question. In the background of amending chapter 25, what's an inspectino?
An Italian inspector.
Somebody had to catch it. So I moved to make a change to the, uh, staff report.
Well, we, well, we can, we can make all those changes in the second reading. Right now, we just need to move it forward to a second reading.
All right, roll call vote to move it to a second reading. All right.
Yes.
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 Okay, very good. Now, can I ask my question on the other one?
Yeah, so now we're moving on to page, if you're looking at the PDF file, it's going to be page 13 out of 82, um, which then goes to the fee comparison chart.
Okay, Joe?
Yes, sir. So.
Go ahead.
If you had, if you had a 2,000 square foot home at 25 cents a square foot, that'd be $500 for a permit.
And the new fee would be 200?
It would. I think one of the major differences that we have to understand is Hennecker, the way, um, we used to do building inspecting, if there's anything under $5,000, we never collected a permit. Under the zoning side of things, we would be collecting a permit now. Um, so you're going to see a balance of revenue coming in because permits technically will be pulled on any property where before, if you had that $5,000 mark, you didn't have to get a permit.
You're going to get a little blowback on that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's, that's in the zone. That's, that's, if you read our zoning ordinance, it's.
I get it. I get it.
I'm just going off the, what's been passed prior.
And I'm just giving you a little historical DNA. Peter?
Yes, I definitely think town council should be the list. Just for that reason you brought up.
That's a good point.
For which part? The 500, the $5,000 rule?
Yeah, wasn't that voted in somewhere?
So that $5,000.
The town meeting.
Yeah, that was a town meeting.
So that $5,000 rule, um, I've spoken, I've already spoken to, uh, town council about this. And the $5,000 rule came into play for building permits, number one, which this is a completely separate permit that's governed under the zoning ordinance, number one. And number two, that $5,000 rule was put in place prior to the state adopting the state building code. When the state adopted the state building code, that $5,000 rule became null and void. We shouldn't have been following it.
Not the way I've been told and I have that.
Yeah, we've, we've had this discussion like three or four times since I've been on the board and we always end up just keeping the $5,000 because number one, the kickback and then also the town vote. So I think.
I can go, I can go back to town council, but that's, that's what he advised me the first time around.
Well, let me just, uh, brief you on this or review this. Uh, back in the day, um, the $5,000 could only be, uh, uh, eliminated by another vote of the town meeting to eliminate it. Now, I know you're separating building permit and zoning permit, but, um, I was told by the same council, I think, who counseled on this one, uh, that we had to go to a town meeting again. Uh, the problem here is that the state building code and inquiries, and I have letters from that too, um, you, it didn't apply to anything Hennecker was doing because town meeting had to accept the state building code. Cause Scott and I have had discussions about this and disagree on it.
No, they don't, everyone owns the building code. It's enforcing it that we don't have.
So that's, and that's correct. So because we've never adopted RSA 67451, which is the enforcement mechanism behind the building code, we never should have been issuing building permits to begin with.
Thank you, Joe. Okay.
I think the board would just like a little handholding on that.
I can, I can do that, yes.
Or, and you can read that as, as political cover.
Yeah. Yeah. But by the way, uh, Joe, don't construe that, uh, me having any opposition. I think this is a great idea. And if it can work, I'm, I'm thrilled about it. So.
Well, it's actually a first step because this puts us without a building enforcement mechanism. Just a zoning enforcement mechanism.
Correct.
Now, another question I have, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, Joe, and this is probably not going to be settled in this year's budget, but I would think that in the future, we will have to have a zoning compliance officer. And I think it should be a separate person than the planning advisor. And I hope we can look forward to, to putting that in the budget.
One of, one of the things, Peter, one of the things that, you know, has come up since we haven't adopted that RSA for the building enforcement to rectify the situation at the next town meeting, all we need to do is put up the RSA for approval, right? For that enforcement mechanism and then we can have our building inspector back. And that takes care of, takes care of it.
Not quite.
I know some people, I know some people would love to shove other, um, RSAs and regulations into it, but it's pretty simple.
We've got a very multi-talented town administrator. He can.
Who's got enough on his shoulders already.
That's correct. But I will say, say that in a town meeting, I believe in the seventies or eighties, they approved the position of code enforcement officer.
Yeah, it was 1974, 75 or 76. I can't remember which.
It never was changed, but we never include, we never, um, the town never voted for a building inspector. And that's why there was a problem. Yeah. What I'm saying a minute ago, more or less was to fund the code enforcement officer if we choose to do that.
Well, we can always move the building inspector funds that we had already authorized over into the, it doesn't have to, because once it's in the operating budget, right? We can then transfer the funds if we have to over into another position for this compliance activity.
True, for the rest of this year, but there's only 5,000 that was appropriated and probably have, a lot of that's been used. That, wait, just another discussion though. I don't want to tie it up tonight on that.
True. And we should bring Mark into the discussion.
Yeah. I'm not eager to create another position, so.
I'm not either.
No, we already have it.
Yeah.
It's called the town.
Further discussion on this, what do we need to do? Just move this to a second reading for this?
I think that, did someone make a motion? Did I make that motion?
Yep.
Okay, roll call vote. Yeah?
Tia, yes.
Scott, yes.
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 Peter, by the end of the meeting, you're going to figure out the roll call vote.
Well, you keep, you go different people every time in a different order, don't you?
I do.
So you'll figure it out, not me.
All righty. Uh, now, so you want to go back up to item six, amend?
You just, you just did that, actually.
We just did that.
Very good.
Who said something about figuring it out?
Hey, I'm thinking until I make it.
So we are now on page 26 of 82, which is the temporary telework. Have we done the teleworking?
We have not, no.
Okay, so which is the temporary teleworking pr, policy, which has been prepared by Joe.
Correct. So again, this is just a response to what we're already doing. Um, as I briefed the board on, uh, town hall staff specifically is working in shifts, um, so that we're not cross contaminating an event, anybody has any COVID activity. Um, this is again, this is a temporary policy to kind of cover us, uh, while people are working from home.
Joe, so I know this is not going to be a, a popular comment, but knowing that our staff or our town hall has been closed to the public, right? And we have very few employees in there. Um, the majority of them have their own separate office space. Um, is, is this really needed at the level that it currently is, especially when there's overlap with people working three days a week and then two days a week? Um, it, it doesn't seem like, especially with some of the tel, the, the work that needs to be done, that it, it's really utilizing our staff in their full capacities. And I, I'd like to get a sense of what kind of work is actually being done by, I, by certain members at home. Like, I know what you're doing while you're at home, but, um, some of the administrative staff, including the town clerk tax collector's office, um, that really has, you know, that needs to be in the office to be sending out some of these registrations, et cetera.
So the way they're working from home, especially in that side of the building is what I would say. Um, that, when Debbie or when Helga are working from home, they're doing a lot of the other side because obviously they wear dual hats. They were, you know, Debbie works in the land use side as well and Helga does the assessing side. Um, so Helga has been working on all of her assessing, getting her updates. Um, campgrounds, actually, um, our assessors have been out there doing all the campgrounds the past couple of days. So she's been updating cards from them. So that's what she's been doing from home is she's able to access her computer and get into Vadar and do everything she needs to do, um, for vision and to update all of her assessing. Uh, Debbie's been doing a lot of, of busy work. Um, she's been updating all the committee lists, reaching out to committees, um, dealing with, you know, a lot of the spreadsheet type stuff, just kind of clearing up work is what she's been working on.
So there's no real way to monitor the current work that they're doing from home? Like, are they taking files home when they're going home to work on some of these stuff that potentially might have sensitive data?
They are not because everything, they're both able to access their work lab PCs from home. Uh, they have remote access right onto our server. So they are not.
And is that traceable?
As far as what they're doing?
As far as what they're accessing?
It is not, no. No.
And is there any, any way that they can provide a list of what cards or what information that they've updated on a daily basis while they're?
Helga's, Helga's printing it all. So there's stacks of paper that she's been printing. So I, I can see what she's doing. Yep. I know, Kim, she's been working on her, the tax lien stuff, uh, getting that all ready. That's what she's been doing the past couple of days.
Further questions? All right. What's the action you want on this? Just to move it?
Again, if.
Or is this just informational update?
I would like to, excuse me, Joe.
Go ahead.
I'd take this as an informational update and by consensus, authorize the town administrator to set the policies and workers staff as best that will suit the needs of the town hall.
And the employees.
I think it probably needs to be stated by a, a, uh, motion because I don't think we can get away with consensus in this meeting format.
Yeah, we can.
It's allowed.
It needs to be a motion.
All right, I make, I make that a motion then.
There's a second?
Yep.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Leon. Roll call vote. Chris, yes?
Tia, yes.
Scott, yes.
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 Nice.
So, Joe, one thing that I, I would like is I would like the board to receive some updates on what's going on and how things are moving forward. This is a very temporary situation, I'm hoping. This is not a permanent situation and I know some employees have gotten really comfortable working at home, even when working from home was not authorized. Um, so we need to make sure that it's communicated that this is a temporary situation. We will be opening town hall and people will be required to report to work as, as.
I think that's obvious, isn't it?
Well, I'm saying it.
There might be some benefits to somebody taking some work home with them. I'd say, let's see what, how.
When there's sensitive data that could be, you know, accidentally looked upon and it's your personal data, you might think and question that.
I would not expect that kind of information to be out there, but there's plenty more to do, I'm sure.
All right. Uh, anything else on this issue? We're good? Moving along to item number eight, 2149, Western Avenue. Joe?
Um, so this was on our agenda back in March, uh, March 17th at our last meeting. Um, I see Judy Joseph has signed on. Um, I don't know if she has, her video isn't on, so I don't know if she has audio capabilities. I haven't gone that far yet. Um, but she has reached out to the town and there's an email attached to this, um, my staff report, uh, basically with more proposals. Um, the direction that the board gave at the last meeting was that she was to reach out to the short sale company and have the short sale company reach out to me so that we can figure out if we're going to negotiate so I can bring something back to you. I have not heard from the short sale company. That's not what she's done. Um, she has reached out though, and she's come back with another, um, offer, I would say of, of $5,000 to settle the liens. Um, I can unmute her and see if we have a microphone on her and she can talk if she's able to, if you would like.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna do it.
Yeah, Judy there?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I can hear you now.
Oh, good. Okay. I don't really know what I'm doing. I don't know if you can see me, but, um, wait a minute. Oh, someone's calling. Oh, all right. All right, here I am again. Are you here?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. So, um, my proposal was that I had, when I had talked to the guy from the short sale company, Tom Gerard, he didn't have any input. Um, why, and that's why he never got back to you. He wasn't going to change anything about all of the, um, calculations he had already done for the short sale and left you guys out. I don't know why he did that, but he did. Uh, and that's when I was trying to fix it on my own by giving you the second email saying, you know, there were some other options. And if you would take the $5,000 in lieu of the whole amount that Barbara owes on the lien from me, um, then we could care, I could go on, you know, we could, I'm could, I could buy the property, I could start taxes and life would go on for me. Um, otherwise I'm going to have to have the house go into foreclosure and that means you're not going to get any money, um, because that's part of the law of New Hampshire. If it, if you get foreclosed and I guess the liens, welfare liens don't get paid. And then, um, you know, I'm going to have to redo all my financing and everything. But, I mean, that's, that's where we're at right now. I just wanted to know if you'd agree to that. If, you know, if you agreed to the 5,000, I'd give Joe a bank check for, uh, $5,000. Then after the closing, I mean, he can release the lien and then I can buy the house.
And stop paying property taxes.
There you go.
Yay.
I will say about the property tax piece, um, this billing cycle, because of the foreclosure has already occurred, uh, it is back on the tax rolls for the June, uh, billing purposes as well.
Okay. Well, I don't know who's going to pay the taxes from January to when I'm the official owner. But what, where was that? Um, I, some of that money I know is in that amount of money that, um, he came up with, uh, that Tom Gerard came up with. It's only like $657 or something. So that would mean that, um, whatever the rest of the amount is, uh, uh, I don't know.
Well, regardless, I believe the taxes would still have to be paid regardless of this situation. So I, I.
It'll be me.
I, I think we have enough information, especially after our last conversation, to make a decision at this point.
Okay. All right. I would probably, um, end up putting, yeah, because those taxes would go on the closing anyway. So that's kind of moot, the taxes from this year. So, um, okay, are you gonna decide now or?
Yes, I'm, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, I, I don't have anything to say. I, I'm just, um.
Would anybody like to make a motion at this point or does, is there any further? Or is there any further...
It's a bad situation and I'm not as well-versed in the intricate details of how this has to proceed as much as Joe is. And I'm just trying to strike the best deal for the town.
Right. So at the last meeting that we had on this topic, it was a four to one vote against that current proposal. There's now a current proposal of $5,000 to settle the liens on the table. And that amount has fluctuated between a couple of different correspondents since that previous meeting. But after the discussion that was held, I believe in March, right, Joe? That vote was a four to one vote saying no to accept the terms of the agreement. I believe Scott was the only vote who sided with the proposal.
There's a gain to agreeing with this. There's no gain to not agreeing with it for anyone.
Scott, could you repeat what you said, please?
I said, there's a gain if we approve this agreement. There's no gain for anyone if we don't do it.
So let me just also remind everybody, the total amount that is left on the table is $18,000 that has been put up in total welfare liens.
It's not on the table. It's nowhere. It doesn't exist.
Regardless, it's $18,000 that has been put up in front of it, welfare liens.
I understand about the welfare.
It's $18,000 that's owed to the town, so it does exist.
So just, again, just so everybody's clear, on the law behind welfare liens, in the event this is foreclosed on, we are not, it's not like a tax lien. We don't take a priority. So if the amount is settled for less than what is owed on that house, we will see no money off of the foreclosure. So the welfare liens will be vacated at that point as well with no money coming to the town.
Unless we want to drag it out for another buyer that can do it. Do we want to do that?
We have no, we have nothing to do with the buyers. And, you know, the person, the actual owner in this case, is not even present and there is no representation from the current owner.
We have a buyer.
We shouldn't even be dealing with the buyer.
Leon, real estate guru, talk to us.
This bad transaction is so far down the road that it never should have been put on that we're in a losing situation. The town's gonna get screwed any way you look at it. We're looking at maybe getting five grand out of it. Otherwise, we're probably gonna get nothing. And I don't want us to be involved at all in any of the details of the transaction because it's not a good transaction. I'll just leave it at that.
Great.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I was wondering if there was any precedent for this. I mean, I don't know where it would show up in records, but for other towns who have been in this situation and what they've done. I don't know if the registry of deeds would know or if I'd have to go from town to town looking for an example of towns that have, you know, settled a welfare lien for less than the amount that is owed, especially when it's gonna be paid by the person who didn't take the lien, who didn't get the money, okay? And that person is gone, is now in Pennsylvania, and I feel duped. And now I feel I'm gonna be let down by the town I've just moved to. So, I mean, it doesn't seem like anyone's gonna win if you just want to... On principle, I understand why you feel the town should get all the money, but I don't believe on principle that I should be the one that should be paying it because I'm not the one who got it. And I'm not the one who, you know, for whatever reasons, she was given that money and supposedly didn't know she owed it. You know, I was duped. And I'm just trying to do the best I can for my situation and, you know, not make any enemies, try to just carry on. And I would just appreciate it if you could appreciate my point of view instead of being, you know, hardline about what you think the town should get. Yeah, I would think the town should get the $18,000 also, but not from someone who doesn't owe it.
Thank you.
I don't think any other buyer is gonna wanna come up with $18,000. It's gonna go to foreclosure and then, as the gentleman said, you're not gonna get anything, you know?
Leon?
Okay.
Leon?
Just to answer Judy's question, one of the things that happens in a situation like this is the town takes the property for taxes. Given the mortgage on it and everything else, we don't want to do that.
So Leon, which way are you leaning?
I'm fed up with the whole business at this point. I'm ready to take the five grand and run.
Seconded.
Peter?
No.
Is that a philosophical no or is that a practical no that you're gonna get more money if it goes to foreclosure?
It's a philosophical no. That's gonna cost us money if we don't do it. At $5,000, we can, you know, we'll make it up. We'll make it up.
Chris, I also say no.
This whole thing's been a damn mess and that's what I'm disgusted with. Everything about it is a mess and that's why I'm really voting no. It just was so bad. $5,000 isn't gonna make me happy. Right now, I want to run with it. Sure, we probably won't get $18,000, but let's just see what happens. I'd like to see a willing homeowner in that house. That's a gain.
I think Peter's persuaded me to give up the five grand.
So we don't get the property taxes this year either then?
We would get the property taxes because the mortgage company is the current owner of the property and they would be required to pay the property taxes.
That's right. Okay, thanks, Joe. Thank you.
I love choices like this. This just makes the job so appealing.
Well, it's as simple as calling for a vote.
We need a motion first.
That's right, yeah. It went on so long, I forgot what was made. I'll make the motion.
Well, Joe, just, so wait, do we have, I think it was a half-hearted motion, but Leon, did you make a motion?
No.
You made the motion.
Nobody made a motion.
No.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the offer of $5,000 to release the liens, which would then allow the applicant to, we'll work towards owning the home.
I will second the motion for the purpose of discussion. Questions on the motion?
It was basically just really bad work on the town's part to let this get as bad as it did. So I think we can end the pain by just accepting that the town made a mistake. It costs us some money and let's move forward.
Town didn't make a mistake.
Yes, they did.
No, because the welfare liens, the welfare, the problem is systemic, if you ask me, because the town is not allowed to reject necessarily welfare requests and a lot of these, a lot of the dollar amounts that are associated with this are welfare liens. The problem is, is that welfare does not take precedence before taxes.
Correct.
So, that's wrong in and of itself. But it's where we are at and we're just in a bad, bad spot. And I'm not sure that hindsight 2020 that anybody would have caught this earlier.
I think they could have. I think that, you know, the people that deal with the welfare do have obligations. And the obligations are not just to give money freely. There's gotta be better conditions for it. We don't know what those conditions are, but that is how the machine really is supposed to work.
Why, let me just...
We're getting off...
Yeah, call the vote.
Okay, but let me just ask philosophically, why don't welfare liens take precedence along with tax liens?
Because that's the state RSA. That's the state's... So, I mean...
All right, we have a motion that was made by Scott. It was seconded by me to take the offer that is presented. I'll call a roll call vote. Yes?
Tia Hooper, no.
Scott, yes.
No.
Peter?
Peter, no.
Motion fails. Two votes to three. Board is stalled. Is there another motion on the table?
What are we gonna do with it? Somebody else can make a decision.
No, we've already voted not to accept the proposal.
So what else are we gonna do?
Nothing. We voted not to accept the proposal based on the votes that were just given.
When did we foreclose on it?
It's not "we" foreclose. It's called the bank foreclosures.
The problem with this property, in all honesty, is not, it's the fact that there's a second mortgage that got taken out on this property. And that's where the fiasco turns into, because you have a first mortgage, second mortgage, then us. And we're never gonna see it because of that process.
I'll still philosophically ask the question of why a second mortgage takes first position over a welfare lien.
Because mortgages take the precedence, unfortunately, per the RSA.
That's just immoral in my book.
Again, it was a tax lien.
You're taking taxpayer money, you're flushing it down the toilet and a bank in Oshkosh land makes the money and we don't.
Yep.
That's a state legislative thing, Chris.
Well, it's wrong.
Call your representative.
And I would hope that we would put a little bit more scrutiny on some of these welfare requests because I think a lot of them are... Never mind. My mother told me not to say anything.
I could tell you from the welfare side, we are looking at the guidelines and how we are moving forward with welfare.
Okay. Anything else on this issue? Okay, item number nine is acceptance of board selectmen minutes of March 3, 2020.
So I believe Leon had some changes that he wanted to incorporate.
I've got a variety of nitpicking on this one. On the public forum one, Lori Marco commended whoever had been doing the town Facebook page. down the middle of the paragraph, Vice Chair Hooper stated that no one should have had access to the teen center. Oh, and above that, the 1, 2, 3, fourth line from the bottom, Osgood asked if they were removed or taken. Top of the second page, Mary stated she and Ron Taylor...
Well, and Leon, as you're going through this, so Mary, it should be Mary Ellen. That's her first name, so if we can make sure that it's Mary Ellen
Okay.
throughout those minutes, if not Mary.
Is Kelly on this?
Yeah, would you like me to unmute her? I can unmute her.
And then on the page...
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, I'm just gonna mute again because now Annabelle's barking because she doesn't like internet people. So, I'm here. I'm just going on mute because I have an obnoxious dog. I love you all.
Joe's got these and can send my comments to you anyway.
I do, yes.
On the third page, item 10, town administrator report, CNHRP reached out regarding tax assignment. I don't know what the hell "tax" is.
Tac, yeah, that's the technical assistance for central planning.
So if we can just spell that out so we know what it is if we ever have to go back to the minutes.
And then the next paragraph, I really couldn't figure out. 228 is five primary and five secondary roads for consideration for bike safety and right-hand turns. I thought, is that what we were talking about or were we talking about?
So, I think that's a traffic count and I don't think, I don't remember or recall bike safety and right-hand turns being part of that conversation.
So I think I just made a comment during the town administrator's report that they're able to track different things other than motor vehicle. They can track pedestrians, they can track motorcycle use, things like that. Right turn lanes, again, that's just some of the...
We'll leave it to you to draft that to make sense.
I have sent your changes, Leon, to Kelly through email.
Okay. Just for the benefit of the rest of us.
Yep.
There was a, the next paragraph, there was a complaint on Hall Avenue of a sewer smell coming from the brook. A dye test was completed and nothing is seeping into the brook. That was from the suspected houses.
That's correct.
And I suggested checking some others. Last page, second paragraph, updating the website. CIBIS does 85% of the town websites. What's the name of the company? Is that C-I-B-I-S?
It's Civic, yes.
So it's missing a Z.
And the second sentence of that, EGOV stands for?
EGOV. That's the name of the company.
Okay. And then vice chairman, next paragraph, Vice Chairman Hooper would like to see a demonstration and recommends, just insert the word "and". Last page, Vice Chair Hooper at the top stated the document for tax payment. I think what she meant was a document listing tax payment arrangements. That's all I had on those.
Well, and it should be the outstanding taxes and the payment arrangements.
Document listing outstanding, yes.
Yeah.
Insert an "outstanding" there then. That's all I have.
Any other edits regarding March 3?
Nope, Leon did a great job.
Thank you, Leon. I understand a motion to approve as presented.
I move.
Seconded by Peter. All those in favor? Roll call. I, yes.
Tia Hooper, yes.
Scott, yes.
Leon, yes.
Peter, yes.
All right, next up are acceptance of the non-public minutes of March 3.
Okay, where are those?
Joe, did you include those?
I'm not seeing them.
They were in, they were emailed to you, I believe. I did not print them.
They were emailed separately.
Correct.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
I can try to send them. We can table that in the next meeting.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's table that and go on to the next one because that's gonna take a while.
Okay, acceptance of board of selectmen minutes, March 17, public.
Leon, did you have changes on this one too?
Yeah. Public forum number one. Just so somebody in the future reading it might be better able to understand that, insert the word "snow" before "banks", Danny Oakley stated there was "snow banks gone and roads, yada, 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 cover the trash". He wishes people would secure their loads better. Makes more sense.
You put the word "to" after leading as well. Leading to, put the "to" after the "leading".
Yeah, okay. Yep. On the rules. This is real nitpicking, but updating the book since the updated in military policy has not been added. Sigged "D" after "update". Second page. Second paragraph. Just for the benefit of the public. Town office open for business, closed for public visitation. Email and phone numbers to contact the proper departments will be listed on the door outside.
Yeah, and if I could just suggest one thing for historical purposes, I think there needs to be something included in there that the town hall is, you know, due to COVID-19 right in there. So if we ever have to go back, you know, 10 years from now, we can see what... Or other people can see what we've done.
The last sentence there, per the governor's orders, car registrations have been delayed. Have also been delayed. Because there's a lot of other stuff going on. Next paragraph, suspended all recycling, all plastics. Paragraph 5, welfare lien, I think we ought to add Western Avenue property for that, just for...
I would even state the whole address.
Yeah, put the whole address in there.
2149.
Western Avenue. The big paragraph there about the fourth line down. Add E and B. Town had been duped by the former owner. And then a couple of lines down, Judy does not feel it is her responsibility. There's a period missing in the RSA reference that Joe made. Is it 165.25, Joe?
For the welfare stuff, I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
165, I'll be colon 20. Is that the one you're on?
And then my comments at the bottom of the page. It is owed and the rest of the problems are between Judy and the realtors and the banks. It would be appropriate. It's not appropriate for the town to come in and try to clean up the expense. Next page. CNH Special Operations Unit. Chief French had sent a memo for the board and recommended that after the shooting that occurred downtown.
And isn't CNH supposed to be central regional New Hampshire?
It is.
So that needs to be changed for central regional New Hampshire.
And that... Next paragraph, Chief French had said if he did not go through the proper channels, there would have been a $5,000 FD. And then just knock out the last paragraph, last sentence. Noise ordinance. Third line. He stated it's difficult to track. I think that's what...
Yeah, it shouldn't be tracked, like land track, it should be track, like tracking.
Either that or traced. The paragraph where I complained about noise ordinance being misused as the end of the second sentence. As they have historically at heavy landowner expensed the defendant established range. Next page, food pantry. Grains in addition to putting no parking signs around the grains. I think that's what was meant. Recently put up sign the building is considered as in the historic district, so needs... And the next one. Has received three positive comments. Couple more down, state of what is going on. Planned on meeting with Hennecker Restaurants and things. Town, just to add the letter "W". And the next one, Civic Plus Website Company, last week gave Joe a demo, and the next weekend they will start layout of the website. That's all the nitpicking I got on that one.
Okay. Somebody wanna make...
I make a motion to approve with Leon's changes.
Seconded by Peter, motion made by Tia, roll call vote, aye.
Tia Hooper, yes.
Scott, yes.
Leon, yes.
Peter, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Motion carries, 5-0. I'm assuming the same issue for the March 17 non-public minutes?
Yeah, I don't have those in my packet.
Are not present either, okay. With that said, we will move right along to the town administrator's report.
Okay, so, just to give people some quick updates. The town, we're looking to do a Hennecker Town Hall forum. Basically, the idea behind that is to have kind of a Zoom meeting like this to allow citizens a chance to come in and speak. And we're looking to do three of them. The first one will talk specifically about town operations. A lot of people who have questions about what's going on in the town to have that forum to come out and speak. The second one's gonna be more for local businesses to talk about the economics behind everything that's going on. We've reached out to the chamber, and the chamber would like to be involved as well, so we're gonna be partnering with them to have that forum. And then the third forum will be with the schools. Again, have superintendent co come in with the town, and again, kind of let the townspeople know exactly what the schools are doing as well. So it's just something we're looking to move forward on, and just want to make you aware of that. Something we've been doing on Facebook, I just want to keep people updated on, is the Hennecker Hoppers Community Storytime. Seems to be getting a good response. We've been doing it now for, I believe, three weeks. Every Tuesday and Thursday, we've been posting a different story that people have been telling. Reading to the kids, whether it be a police officer, firefighter, things like that. Obviously, people should know by now, and it's passed, but town meeting has been postponed. The new date is May 9 at 1 o'clock at the Hennecker Community School. I wanted to give you an update on the reevaluation that's going on. So, obviously, with town meeting not happening, we haven't been able to have our revale yet. So, we've reached out to DRA to find out what our options are, and we've reached out to Vision, who was gonna be doing our revale. So we are gonna move forward with a statistical reevaluation. So we're not gonna do a full measure like we had planned on originally doing. There's a cost savings to that. It's gonna be $49,300 as opposed to the $93,000 it was gonna cost to do the full measure. We still are upgrading our software package as well, that's the same price that they've quoted us for the $5,000. They've also built in 100 spot, basically, evals going off building permits that have been pulled, so that we can actually make sure that our records are meeting what the records are supposed to look like. Road postings have been lifted.
Hang on, before you move on to that, what does... What is the net effect of the revale regarding having to do a full revale now that you're gonna do the statistical one? Does this reset the clock?
Yes, we have another now, five years from now, we would move on and have to... We're gonna have to do a full measure the next time around. They recommended every 10 years, we're gonna be at 15 by not doing a full measure revale. So we're gonna have to do it five years from now, in 2025. You'll have to do a full measure, otherwise, we're gonna get into it... Nashua is a good example of a town that waited like 30 years to do a full measure, and they caught a lot of backlash from DRA because of it.
We might wanna revisit this as well, as soon as we do have a town meeting. To try to plan this out, we might, especially depending on some of the building projects that we have and the renovations that get done, we might wanna do it sooner rather than later.
Right, but my point, I guess my end run on that is that we had the money in the capital reserve fund
Correct.
to fund the statistical, so we will not need to present the Warren article of additional taxes.
Correct, but we're still short, I believe it was $66,000, Joe, or something in that nature.
That's what we have in there.
Yeah, or we still have to come up with some additional funding, so we're still gonna have to put money towards the revale moving forward. We, you know, it's not like you can just leave it.
We're gonna want to continue the capital fund, yes.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, but we don't have to raise any more by taxation for this particular item.
Well, yes, that would be...
We're gonna have to.
Wait, you said there was 60... You said that, I thought there was $66,000 in the revale fund.
There is.
And the statistical revaluation was gonna cost 49.
Correct, but again, we're gonna wanna start budgeting for five years from now, because we know...
No, no, I agree with that, but we can pull, I forget what Warren article it is, about where we had to raise the additional 60,000 or whatever it was.
We can, once we get to that point, Chris, we can always amend it on the floor to reduce that amount, so it fits in with the projections moving out, right.
We don't need the full 33. We can adopt it, because we know now we have five years that we're gonna have to move forward with.
And that's if the governor doesn't
Correct.
have us go to default.
That was good news, that we didn't have to do the whole thing.
Yep, so, that's how we're moving forward. We've already set the contract to DRA for approval. Vision's on board with it, so that's how we're moving forward. So road postings have been lifted, just so everybody's aware on that. There's no more, no trucking going on. I gave a quick update, just so you're aware, on the upcoming road work. GMI is working. If you've been on Western Ave or Hall Ave, you're gonna see all the manholes up. They're gonna be street sweeping and then putting the final overlay on. And then, I've started a new town administrator's newsletter, just wanna make people aware of it as well, just trying to update people so they know what's going on in the town. And then there's just a couple of important dates, just so you're aware. Tomorrow night, we have a planning board meeting. There's three items on the agenda. May 5 would be the next selectmen's meeting as scheduled, and then May 9 is town meeting, so.
And I'll send out a reminder to everybody, if we do move forward on May 9, what your topics were that you got assigned, just in case.
And then there's just a couple of things I wanted to address that weren't on the TA report. The first one is, the transfer station had applied to get a grant through the Rotary program for some air purifiers specifically for the police department and for the transfer station. Rotary has approved that grant, it's 100%. So they're gonna be moving forward and getting air purifiers for the police department and for the transfer station for $1,826 on that. And then... And then on the other, the final item I have would be under the department reports on the finance. And I just wanted to make people aware. We've been looking at how we can do direct deposit and how we can be moving forward with that. And I've had Russ kind of looking into it, I've been looking into how we can actually move forward so that the town can have direct deposit. Our current finance software does not give us the ability to do direct deposits, is the issue we're running into. So, after speaking to Russ and finally figuring out how we can move forward with this, if we wanna move forward direct deposit, the way we're gonna have to go through is through a payroll service. Have a contract out with, you know, ADP, Checkmate, one of the number of services out there.
Well, and... Yeah, and you got two quotes previously
I did.
from both of them, and they were really reasonable, Joe. If you wanna put those right on the docket for May 9, or whenever we meet, May, whatever. Let's get this done, let's...
Sure.
Let's go.
Well, one of the reasons for also going with the payroll outfit is because we get the rest of the stuff that the employees aren't getting. They leave balances and stuff like that.
Correct. And that is the other issue, is, you know, we don't supply them in an Italian manner, so as far as vacation time, sick time, comp time, they get it maybe once every two months, three months.
And that puts us in a legal situation, yeah, so let's get it done.
So...
Put it on the next agenda.
Sure, and then just to update you on the other piece...
Hold on, Peter's got a question.
Yeah, so hiring a payroll service, as I understand it, is needed, in our case, because of our own software not having the capability of working this through our bank just to do it. In other words, we have to have a middle person doing it. Why can't we be advancing or upgrading our software ourselves and putting that in as a budget item at some point?
So we already have this in the capital reserve, which is waiting for town meeting, Peter, which is the $25,000 for the technology fund. Joe and I've talked about this at length, and so has the CIP group. There's a bunch of enhancements that are needed at the town level at this point. $25,000 is just the starting point. We know this is gonna be a long-term, complicated thing because of how outdated, especially, our finance systems are. But we need to start moving forward, and the most important place right now, which is it's quick fix, is with this automatic payroll and getting that vacation and sick time to lessen some of the liability for the town. That's the quick fix, and then we can move over, once, if approved, it's town meeting, for the $25,000 for the technology fund.
Okay, so this, in hearing that, Tia, I think you're saying that this is possibly a temporary situation, and at some point, we may be able to do it all on our own.
So, going with an outside payroll firm, and we can discuss this more in May, it also reduces the liability when there's tax changes, because the payroll firm takes on all of that responsibility and liability. And if somebody doesn't get their retirement cut in a certain way, or doesn't get those benefits, or there's a miscalculation, the payroll company is actually responsible, not the town, so it leaves a liability on our front.
Okay, but my point was just, why couldn't we do it? You've answered that, so we're gonna be leading up to that at some point.
Correct.
At some point, we may not need to use the payroll company, that's all I'm kidding at.
Well, we might, we might want to, to lessen the liability for the town.
Well, I don't know if that's true.
There's another consideration. To do what we legally are supposed to be doing, putting balances on the payroll and all that stuff. We may not wanna take that on, because we may not wanna add staff to do all that stuff on a more up-to-date basis. That's all, that's gonna be balanced.
And we, well, let's save that, this discussion for May, yeah.
Those payroll services can be pretty pricey sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
I think the quotes that Joe got were quite reasonable.
Joe, I cut in on you, so...
No, that's fine, yeah. I mean, again, the quotes that we got were between $7,000 and $10,000, and I'll go over that on May 5. I know that ADP specifically said that they're quoted as high, because we didn't have exact numbers as far as employees go, and that obviously would impact it. They're actually, the more employees you have, the cheaper it gets, is how they typically will work. Because they're doing, once the system's in there, for them, it's easy to move forward on it.
Yeah, and they also do all the tax reporting.
They do all the tax reporting, correct. And then, so are we good on that, before I move on to the next one?
For now, yeah.
For now, again, I'm just presenting information right now. And then just, and just to make everybody aware, one other thing we're working on, on the IT side of things, is we're moving over to an exchange server. So we're gonna be getting rid of all, some people have Gmail accounts, some people have TDS accounts for email purposes. We're gonna be moving to everybody having a Hennecker.org email address. And one of the major purposes behind that is so we have email retention for right-to-no purposes. Right now, if somebody were to file a right-to-no request, we'd have to go through their, I don't wanna say private email, but it's through TDS, and we don't have access to it. We'd have to actually go to their physical, log into their account to be able to pull emails under a right-to-no purpose. With an exchange server, we'll be able to pull those emails, type in a search phrase, and any email that anybody has sent... With an exchange server, we'll be able to pull those emails, type in a search phrase, and any email that anybody has sent that hits that phrase will populate for right-to-know.
I'm getting error messages when I send you stuff at Hennecker.org saying that you're not there.
I think that's because we've already started the switch, we, we've started the switch, but we haven't hit the switch, if that makes sense, so. So I, I just wanted to update you on that, that, that's being in the works as well right now.
All right, anything else?
That's what I have for you.
All right. What do you want to do with, department reports, is that just update only, we're not going to go through those?
The only one I wanted to specifically speak about right now was that finance one, um, just so you kind of knew what was going on with it. But the department reports, again, they're purely informational, just trying to get you guys to know what's going on in each department.
Okay.
So can we get for the May call, Joe, since we're, I, I don't believe the governor signed off on anything and waiving our responsibility of being within a certain percentage, correct?
That is correct.
So we have, what, thirty-five percent that we can expend before we need to stop spending, and we're really close to that amount, what are we at, like twenty-two?
I believe so, yeah.
So we're at twenty-two percent, we have thirty-some odd percent, and then we need to make some really drastic or decisions, and I, I don't know what the payroll mechanisms look like, or what we're doing on a weekly, um, basis for payroll, or what those expenditures are looking like, or what Russ has in the queue. I would even be tempted to have a special meeting next week, I think Russ needs to be part of this conversation. To answer some questions on where we are, what are we looking at for bills that are coming in, and maybe even the department heads on the call.
Okay.
I suspect you'll get guidance from NHMA or the exec, the governor here pretty shortly, because last I heard, there were more than forty towns that were in this predicament.
Right, and we've been waiting for a while.
And speaking to Margaret Burns from NHMA, um, you know, right now, they're kind of, they're of the impression, again, and it, this is a, but, this is lawyers who are taking opinions. Um, but they're on the interpretation that even if we don't have a budget, as long as we're meeting where we were at last year, keeping that kind of level-headed, level-funded from where we were last year, we're okay to continue moving forward. Um, and we are obviously below that, we're at, you know, we have seventy-seven percent available still, so we're, like you said, Tia, we are closing in, but we're not fully there yet.
But I, I'd rather have a discussion now, just in case the governor doesn't sign off on something, because we've been waiting, what, it's been a month, pretty much, of waiting and being told that he would be signing off on these, these approvals, so instead of being stuck at the last minute to make, you know, some potential difficult decisions, or even communicate with the department heads, I think we need to get ahead of this game and start preparing for the worst-case scenario here.
Leon.
I think that we can meet and beat our jaws for two, three hours, and unless we have some kind of guidance from the governor or some response through, uh, the municipal association, we're sort of shooting in the dark, we, we don't know what guidance we're going to have, so I think that as long as we're functioning at a level that doesn't blow the levels we worked at last year, in terms of operating budget, we're probably okay. The thing I got a real problem with is how we're going to go about the bond for wastewater, the bond for Cogswell Springs, the bond for roadwork. And I don't, you know, speculating on what we might be able to do with that is probably going to be a waste of hot air until we have some, either get to have a town meeting, or else get some guidance from the governor.
I agree, Leon.
All right. Anything else, Joe?
I'm just trying to, there, oh, there you go.
Thank you.
No, yeah, no problem.
Sorry, the dog started barking, so I had to beat myself.
No worries, uh, that's, that's, that's what I have for the department reports and the town administrators.
Hey, I'm going to assume that there were no selectman reports because of meeting moratorium, or is that, Peter, did you have a comment?
Well, I just had a quick, quick report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, my quick report is that the athletic committee met last night, uh, and, uh, I think I may have stated this before, but they've continued their philosophy of, uh, of not having, or holding back all of the, uh, spring and summer programs for now, uh, until further notice, uh, so this really, they're at a standstill is quite what, what's happening. They're going to keep the, anybody that, uh, sent in any money for the, uh, programs coming up, uh, will, uh, have the option, I believe, of leaving it with them and having it applied to when their child's support, uh, sport comes up, they can apply it to that. They don't want to get into a situation where they have to refund, and I'm not sure how they're going to do that, but they, they're hoping that people will use monies that are already sent in as a future credit.
All right, Leon.
Peter, just a, a question that's not part of your basic responsibility, and maybe Joe could better add it. What's happening with welfare? I, I'm seeing horror stories from other towns that are being hit really bad, are we being hit bad, really?
Well, I'm pleased to tell you that it's well under control, and, uh, to Tia's point, uh, if we were to compare what has been spent the first three months of, uh, two thousand nineteen to the first three months of two thousand twenty, I think you'd see, it'd be pleasantly a surprise how, how little has been spent, uh, in the first three months, and and I'm not criticizing anybody for that, but it's just the way it's been, um, I've been, uh, I don't want to say I've been enjoying it because of welfare, but I do like doing that work, and, uh, I have been, uh, having, uh, hours, uh, every Wednesday, uh, for like five weeks now, and, uh, there isn't that much business yet. But I might be getting some business from people who never would consider asking for help, if this thing keeps up longer, and, you know, rents can't get paid, and more, even a mortgage here or there, of course, a mortgage lien that would have some bad.
That's what's being projected and.
Yeah, but right now, Leon, it's going really well.
Good.
Budget-wise and everything else-wise. How's Carol doing? Uh, well, I, I, I really.
Should we, we, should we discuss that non-publicly?
No. Again, well, we're actually doing okay, I've talked to her, so, I mean.
All right, any other selectman reports? Tia?
No, I'm good.
Scott?
Nothing.
Leon?
Can't wait for the barber shop to open.
To cut what, Leon?
Okay, with that said, uh, it is time for public comment number two, if there's any audience members that.
Phil Marco has his hand up.
Yep, I'm on mute right, right now.
Mr. Marco.
Hi, everybody, um.
Hi.
Uh, long meeting for sure, but, uh, Joe, that was a great idea on the public Zoom meetings, I look forward to that. Great. Uh, the one thing I wanted to bring up, uh, late last fall, uh, the swap shop closed, and the idea was that would open up back in, or open in the spring. Um, obviously, given this current situation, probably not a good idea to do it right now, but ha, have plans been put in place to reopen and how to reopen it? Um, there was discussions about having, uh, trained volunteers, um, where are we on this, so that we're not, like, at the last minute trying to figure out what to do?
If it's all right, I'll answer that, so.
Absolutely.
So Chris and I have a meeting and talking about this, um, and we actually were planning on the, now with the May meeting, um, having a presentation, uh, what the plans are to get the swap shop reopened.
Okay, so you, you have some plans?
Yeah, Chris and I have been meeting, and she's developed some plans, I've got some plans, and we're putting them together, and we're working on a presentation to give to the board.
All right, excellent, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Any other audience members for public comment? Going once? Nobody's, uh, being reached privately for some of the members that are muted to, I see someone picking up a phone, trying to make a phone call. Joan, are you trying to reach us? Joan, are you trying to reach us?
No, she's saying no.
No, okay. All right, um, not hearing anything, I'll close down public forum number two, and, uh, if there's no other, if there's no other stuff before this board, I'll adjourn the meeting before we go into non-public. We'll go into non-public for RSA ninety-one A colon two, Roman numeral, help me out.
Yes, I'll make a motion to go into non-public. We're seconding it.
Thanks all for attending, we appreciate it, I hope it wasn't too painful for you guys. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You.
All right, so everybody that's on the board level, we are officially adjourned, roll call, yes?
Yes.
Tia, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
She is, she is already gone, she's in the other meeting, I guess.
Okay, so remember, we have to log out of this meeting, close this one down, and then go to the non-public meeting.
When I end the meeting, you're all going to get kicked out, so.
Okay.
All right.
We'll reconvene in two minutes.